That was loud, I tell ya. I got a little feedback on this. Okay. We have a doubleheader tonight. First off, we're gonna kick off the special meeting with the comprehensive strategic plan final presentation and adoption. And I welcome all those that are here to witness and watch and those that are live streaming tonight. Commissioner Marley is coming in late. Commissioner Legg is resting. He will not be here tonight. And Mayor Protem, Dr. McCray, is by telephone. So we have her on the cellphone here and she'll be participating. And we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mayor Protem, an affirmative along with Commissioner Craver and Commissioner Scorola. Okay, Ashley. Let's go.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for having me back again tonight to wrap up what has been quite the process to put together a strategic plan outlining the vision for Hope Mills. In compiling this plan, you know, we've worked with the board individually, collectively as a whole. We've done some community surveys and outreach. We've worked heavily with staff. So a lot of time and effort and feedback has gone into putting together this plan that is reflective of everybody's common vision for Hope Mills. So on the screen is sort of an outline of the strategic plan booklet. Y'all all have a copy. I will, some of it I will read verbatim, some of it I will not, but slow me down or stop me if you have any questions. Oh, nope, go back. Sorry. All right. So it starts off with an introduction and, you know, Cumberland County has had a tremendous amount of growth over the years and Hope Mills has been a big part of that. You know, y'all are a town of about 18,000 people. I know you've heard me say ad nauseam that you've got 5,000 homes on the books for the next several years, so you're growing very quickly. And one of the things, if not the top feedback we got from the community survey was, what do you think of when you think of Hope Mills? And it is hometown, small-town, nostalgic feel. And y'all should be very proud of yourselves because that is hard to do with a community of any size, but especially one as large as y'all are and with as big a geographic footprint as you have. So hats off to you for getting to where you are now and being able to put together a vision to carry those goals forward. I do want to say that this is a policy document. It does not carry the force of law. So this is reflective of your policy goals, staff's ideas on how to implement those goals, but it does not carry the force of law. This is simply a vision that is reflective of the community expectations based on the survey. Okay. All right. Next slide. So as y'all know, planning ahead is really important. And if you don't have a vision, a vision is the best way to make sure that where you're going is where you want to go. This strategic plan will safeguard the things that Hope Mills values such as parks and recreation opportunities, the historic Trade Street District, the people, your quality of life, baseball, your hometown, small-town feel. That's what this vision will help, strategic plan will help safeguard. All of those are just a few of the reasons that people choose to move to, stay in, and come back to Hope Mills. This vision is only achieved when the strategic goals that we're gonna outline in a little bit match up with your available and planned resources. That's just code for your money. So no plan works by itself. This is gonna work in conjunction with your other long-range plans like your capital improvement plan, your long-range budgeting, because you want to make sure that you identify your goals and you have a plan on how to get there and to pay for them when you're ready. So I will let Drew talk to y'all later about paying for some of these ideas. But this plan really just provides a framework to align those resources with commitment from town leaders such as yourself and staff to bridge that gap between what you have now, what you want to keep going forward, and really the vision that is Hope Mills in the next five, 10, or 20 years. So you'll see we've outlined the vision statement for the town of Hope Mills, which I would just like to read for everybody. And that is, "The mission of the town of Hope Mills is to provide exceptional public services in a fiscally responsible manner to meet and exceed the needs of our residents, visitors, and business community while inspiring community spirit and enhancing the unique quality and character that is Hope Mills." So in accomplish, that vision is what drives this plan and all the other town plans. And in accomplishing that vision, on the next page, you'll see we've outlined some bullet points, and I'm sorry that they're not bigger on the, on the screen, but we've outlined some bullet points that are commitments from the Board of Commissioners to help achieve this vision. So the first is that the Board of Commissioners will strive for efficiency in handling town businesses, business. You'll work hard and you'll attend all meetings when possible. Commissioners will keep the best interest of the town at the forefront of their decision-making. You'll consider all aspects of a situation and make thorough, deliberate, and well-reasoned decisions. Commissioners will explore all viewpoints. That means listening to citizens and other community partners and collaborating with town staff, learning from them, and compromising when needed. Commissioners will stay cohesive, collaborative, and collegial and connected to the town manager and each other. Commissioners will demonstrate respect for all opinions and support the decisions of the board. Once decisions are made by the majority, commissioners will support that decision. Part of advancing a vision is tackling new and novel ideas and processes. So that's, that's kind of the how that you'll achieve these goals. So next, we're gonna outline the policy goals. Policy goals in general are broad. These are broad categories. These are the top five categories that emerged through our work with the board, the staff, and the community. But they're broad. They identify the most critical issues facing the town. And each policy goal will have a specific initiative that's prioritized. You can revisit this annually or biannually to assist with the allocation of resources and staff time to ensure efficiency and effectiveness. And as we get into the plan, we'll identify sort of the management you have in progress and what you're doing to advance those goals today. And then we'll have some strategic initiatives on how you can move those things forward in the future. Luke, skip to the next slide. This is, this shows you how all of these five goals fits into the quality of life in Hope Mills. Because that is the, the central thing is how these goals improve quality of life in Hope Mills. So Ashley, if you'll bear with me, we'll just start breezing through the, the individual objectives. So Goal One was downtown vibrancy, economic growth, and community character. So through that goal, the town of Hope Mills desires to promote economic vitality through the development of a vibrant downtown, economic growth, and unique character. When that's achieved in Hope Mills, you will have a downtown that has a vibrant mix of businesses that are centered on food and beverage, retail, and neighborhood services that will attract area residents in coordination with sufficient parking, attractive public spaces, and regular special events to foster the small-town hometown feeling that characterizes Hope Mills. The counterpart to that is the town as a whole outside of downtown will contain an appropriate mix of land uses, which will be made up of commercial, office, and industrial use to enhance property values, create jobs, and make opportunities available for shopping, services, and products desired by the citizens of Hope Mills and the region. So we go on to outline some strategic initiatives. And I'm gonna hit some of what I think the high points are in the interest of time, but I'm happy to talk through any that y'all think specifically. Some of the top action items for achieving your goals as it relates to downtown vibrancy, economic growth, and community character are creating action plans for areas suitable for non-residential development. We heard from a lot of, a lot of feedback from the board that you want some access to greater, greater access to healthcare facilities. Finalizing plans for the financing of the Gulfview Recreation Project. I know you have plans in place. You've had a lot of discussion, at least in the six years that I have been involved with the town, over the future development of that property. You've got some plans in place. Talk about how to finance those. Establishing a redevelopment plan for the historic Trade Street District. When we ask people where they thought downtown Hope Mills is, because that's important. You have to have a downtown in order to have downtown vibrancy. The number two, top two responses we got were the lake area and historic Trade Street. Lucky for y'all, they're very near each other. So that's an easy gap to bridge. But establishing a redevelopment plan for historic Trade Street District will help y'all build upon a great asset y'all already have. Implementing a streetscape project around the Hope Mills Lake and the historic Trade Street District to further improvements and updates necessary to encourage private investment and placemaking. That'll work hand-in-hand with your redevelopment plan. Increasing town involvement in the business recruitment efforts of the county and state. Y'all are already doing a great job being at the right tables and in the right rooms when those discussions, but something that y'all can continue to do. Identifying development options for vacant and dilapidated parcels in the historic Trade Street District will also give you something to help private citizens should they decide to market their property. But it will give you a platform to say, here's a great opportunity and how you can be a part of our long-term vision for Hope Mills. I know I skipped over some, but if anybody has any specific comments, we can come back to those. In there also is working with regional health industry partners for the construction of medical offices and health infrastructure expansion, especially mental health-related facilities and resources. Those needs were screamed by the board and echoed in the community. So let's talk about management and progress real quick. So those are things y'all are already doing. Pursuing and implementing the Brownfield Program, which will help open up resources should you decide to create a redevelopment plan for the historic Trade Street District. Creating economic development marketing materials to assist with recruiting companies to locate to Hope Mills, specifically destination retail, boutique shopping, and family-oriented sit-down restaurants. These new industries will increase your tax base as well as economic opportunities for the town. So we've distilled through the things you're already doing, the strategic initiatives for the future, and come up with what we think are appropriate next action steps. In no particular order, but just tied together some themes. So the first one would be identifying and creating a core downtown area near Hope Mills Lake and the historic Trade Street District. Seeking opportunities to encourage infill development and redevelopment for vacant, dilapidated, and underutilized properties, but also encouraging the preservation of the historic structures and the architectural elements that are so important to your citizens. Seeking additional opportunities to promote and preserve the historic, unique character and environment around Hope Mills by identifying projects with local partners for preservation and reuse. Identifying funding opportunities to create and implement a streetscape plan and fund enhanced services in the newly created downtown area. I did say these were in any order you choose, but you do have to pick the downtown area before you can have a streetscape plan for it. And similarly, working with community partners and property owners to complete a neighborhood plan for historic Trade Street to rehabilitate the area, including the Hope Mills District. And that would also include extending your service area and different infrastructure, both public and private, into the community. So you have a lot of opportunities to partner and be a partner there should the town choose to pursue that. So the second goal centers around public safety and neighborhood enhancement. And we've identified that goal as providing for a safe and secure community that nurtures livable and well-maintained neighborhoods that are family-friendly. Family-friendly was a common theme in the survey responses, from family-friendly restaurants to family-friendly activities. So think of that the same way you do baseball or hometown. I mean, family-friendly was a top term that came to mind when people were asked what they thought about Hope Mills. So what does this goal look like when it's achieved? This will be achieved when Hope Mills develops an environment for community-engaged policing and code enforcement that emphasizes maintaining safe, family-friendly neighborhoods, improving public environment for accessibility, and encouraging community ownership in improving private property. Y'all are already doing a lot of these things. And again, I'm just gonna hit some of the strategic initiatives, and these are just options for you to pursue based on our feedback. So evaluate and implement growth and public safety staffing for specialized units necessary for service provisions in growing communities. Expanding coordinated public safety training for multi-hazard threats, specialized, and associated specialized units necessary for growing communities in partnership with Fayetteville Technical Community College in Cumberland County. An example of this would be high-risk response training. Updating and implementing, updating the implementation strategies for your 2022 Hope Mills pedestrian plan. That'll keep your walkability and accessibility top of mind, which goes hand-in-hand with neighborhood enhancement and public safety. Working with FAMPO, Fayetteville Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, to initiate a process to evaluate minor collector and local road intersections. We did get some very specific feedback related to certain intersections and certain roads. Unfortunately, a lot of those do not fall within the jurisdiction of Hope Mills. So you are gonna have to rely on your partners and everybody's great friends at the DOT because that's just the nature, that's just the nature of it. And I would suggest, we'll talk about this with your department heads tomorrow, but just some public education on, we hear you, but we're limited in what we can do to fix this stoplight, this sidewalk, this particular intersection. Enhancing the presence of public safety offers through officers through the School Resource Officer Program in local schools, including active shooter trainings, educational resources, and strengthening your relationships with your students, families, educators, and staff, including your school resource officers. So for your management and progress on the next page, things you're doing that you should continue to do, maintaining and increasing your ISO ratings for your fire department, completing your departmental policy reviews, utilizing the current funding to explore outside funding opportunities like CDBG grants to improve your infrastructure, accessibility, and housing. You're already doing a neighborhood, a community-wide neighborhood cleanup day, which is great, but working with that to promote awareness of other services that the town offers, like your services that could help improve housing, utility savings, social services, food accessibility. I know home, your homelessness outreach has been a big thing. You could work that in there too. But just ways that you're, things you're already doing that are a natural next step for how you can promote some of the additional resources for the town. Next action steps, sorry, not next page, next action steps. So again, in no particular order, furthering your traffic calming efforts where needed and where appropriate, because again, you don't have control over a lot of these things. But that would include evaluating speed limits, your physical improvement, always stops, signalization, public education and enforcement as it relates. But supporting your police department efforts and public safety partnerships to enhance training and equipment for high-risk active shooter response and coordination with area education, community partners. And this would rely heavily on including your school resource officers. All right. Goal Three. This goal pertains to infrastructure, transportation, and the environment. So the policy goal here would be for the town leaders to develop and maintain infrastructure and policies to support new growth, improve the quality of life for residents, and provide for a clean and green environment. When that goal is achieved, the town will have infrastructure, transportation, and environmental goals that reflect public utilities, land, services, and open spaces that are designed, maintained, and extended to provide for necessary water and sewer, stormwater, roads, sidewalks, bikeways, paths, intersections, facilities, and debris removal for existing communities and for your planned growth, whether that is commercial or residential. Some of the strategic initiatives include designing and implementing a multipurpose path connecting the Hope Mills Lake and the historic Trade Street District with other parts of town. This will be particularly helpful if you choose to make that your downtown core area. We did hear from lots of folks that they would like to see the lake trail completed. Again, there may be some public education there in terms of what you can and can't do on private property, but that was a big one, was completing the trail around the lake. But evaluating opportunities to update your other plans for consistency with the adopted land use plans to promote mobility and accessibility, walkability. Identifying cost-effective measures to improve aesthetics at key town gateways. Having a tree health study to encourage a healthy tree canopy and improved public It is the bottom of this list, top of the next page, but this is probably one of the most important strategic initiatives y'all can advance. And it's creating and implementing a townwide Greenway Master Plan to encourage and promote connectivity and walkability. That's something that as development comes to you, whether it is commercial or residential, they'll have to tie that plan into your goals for the future. They'll have to tie your goals that are identified in the Greenway Plan into their development for the future. So some of the things y'all are already doing under the management and process is supporting the implementation of DOT initiatives. Again, that relates to whatever they're doing to improve your thoroughfares, your corridors, your intersections. Establishing a project funding for transportation, bike, and pedestrian improvements that are eligible for outside agency funding for projects that are identified in adopted plan. You have a lot of economic development efforts along I-295 and I-95 at exit 41. Continuing to staff the technical advisory and technical community boards with the Fayetteville Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. And implementing and updating recommendations of the 2018 multimodal congestion management plan. I don't know if y'all have plans to update that otherwise, but it's good, that's why it's on management and progress. Again, the next action steps were develop a Greenway Master Plan, conduct a sidewalk condition survey, and establish a plan for maintenance, replacement, and extension of sidewalks consistent with the Hope Mills multimodal plan. Some survey respondents were very specific with areas they'd like looked at. I think given that, it's best to just take a look at the town as a whole. Work with the other regional partners like FAMPO to promote mobility options. Evaluate opportunities to update town plans for consistency with updated, adopted land use plans promoting mobility and accessibility throughout town. I've been breezing through these. Do y'all have questions? Okay. Yeah, well, if it relates to a specific initiative or a specific goal, feel free to stop me. So Goal Four centers around parks, recreation, special events, and culture, which is such a huge part of what makes Hope Mills, Hope Mills. So the identified goal is to establish facilities, events, and programs that connect the community, promote healthy lifestyle opportunities, and culturally engage citizens and visitors. So when that goal is achieved, the town of Hope Mills will be able to provide recreational amenities and services to residents and visitors through quality facilities, a diverse program offering, varied parks, and special events guided by a community-driven master plan that provides for accessibility and connectivity for all citizens. Y'all are already doing so many of these things. So we did not have a whole lot of strategic initiatives to pursue. This is a pat on the back, keep doing what you're doing. So we just highlighted the management and progress, and then we identified some next steps. So this goal is a little bit different in that there aren't any strategic initiatives. It's more, keep doing what you're doing and expand it. Which starts with working with your community partners and organizations to create a year-round special event schedule. Continuing to evaluate opportunities for usable open space to better align the outcomes with implementing the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. You have a lot of plans in place and on paper that I think you should take action to implement and fulfill. Completing the Gulfview Greenway Property Enhancement Project. Updating Greenway Plans and Establishing an Implementation Schedule. Identifying a plan to connect Hope Mills Lake with the historic Trade Street District. A lot of these goals will dovetail with other plans and with each other. Most of that comes to Hope Mills Lake and the historic Trade Street District and downtown. Updating your Parks and Rec Master Plan to reflect the next 10-year period. Evaluating opportunities for the expansion of programming for diverse and special populations and to improve the inclusion and access of existing programs. So next steps, we came up with three common themes. Implementing the plans to update the Recreation Center and Senior Center to provide accessible program space and increase the number of indoor recreation and gym facilities to accommodate growing programs for seniors and youth. Initiate the construction of the Gulfview Recreational Facility to accommodate those growing programs for seniors and youth. And design an athletic field complex to increase local and regional options for field sports such as baseball and soccer. Soccer wasn't mentioned as many times as baseball, but it was mentioned a number of times in the survey as something people would like to see the Parks and Recreational Opportunities expand to include. All right. Goal Five. Organization, culture, and communication. This is what happens in this building and other town buildings and with staff and elected and appointed leaders. So the goal is to build a professional and inclusive town organization that is fiscally responsible, seeks innovative practices, and values the development and diversity of staff. That goal is achieved when the town builds an organization that is committed to working towards a goal of excellence in service to its citizens, businesses, visitors, and employees through responsible fiscal management, inclusive communication, innovative technologies, and professional development. Again, I'm just gonna highlight some strategic initiatives. Establishing a timeline and financial plans for the future design and construction of police and fire station. Establishing a timeline and financial plan for the future design and construction and expansion of a new town hall. Implementing enhancement to employee professional development and continuing education opportunities to establish succession planning and to meet ever-increasing skills needed for public service delivery to build a training mindset in the organization. Enhancing opportunities for cross-department interface through organization-wide programs and efforts. Let's highlight some of the management and progress. So that would include updating and implementing your employee evaluation and development program. Analyzing current town hall space needs and planning for necessary expansion. Something I've heard a number of. I mean, you're a growing community. You have limited physical resources. You need to take a look at what you've got and how you can make that work and if, to the extent you can't, make a plan for how that can work in the future. The next action steps would be working with a financial advisor to establish a sustainable plan to fund needed capital improvements to ensure adequate public facilities, parks, greenways, roads, and infrastructure is available when you need it. Establishing an organization-wide customer relations management system to receive, track, respond, and report to inquiries from citizens and customers of the town so that you're maintaining a responsive service delivery as your community grows. Again, y'all are doing a great job of it, and you're 18,000 people, but it's, that's not an easy task. Enhancing your organization communication to support clear, consistent messaging to the public for municipal services that are provided and achievements obtained through the implementation of established communication plans. And last, but not least, completing a facility needs analysis to plan for necessary property and structural needs to maintain services for the growing community. So that is your strategic plan framework in a nutshell. You'll notice you have another document that I'm not gonna go through tonight, but it is Economic Development Strategies. So much of the feedback from the board individually as a whole, when we talked with staff and we talked to citizens, related to economic development, either on a large commercial level or on a more granular community level. These economic development strategies are tips and tools to help you identify what your next project should be and how you can advance those goals. A lot of it is working with your local business community.
Okay.
All right.
Go ahead. Commissioner Scorola.
I just want you to reiterate for our public audience that you developed a strategic plan both on citizen input and town, local government staff input.
Yes. And I will say that the citizen input was not very far off from the town staff and the town board's input. I mean, everything y'all said, the citizens echoed. We heard Hope Mills Lake. We heard historic Trade Street. We heard more, greater access to medical facilities, specifically mental health, more family-oriented restaurants, more family-oriented businesses, grocery stores. So it was like having the same conversation with different groups of people in different places.
So would you say it's like we're listening to citizens?
Yes. And I would say that y'all are all on the same page, at least from the questions I ask. Everybody had very similar answers. I mean, your themes, they just emerged on their own.
Thank you.
Welcome, Commissioner Marley. She just went through the presentation. I think you got a copy of it too. We can go back through it if you want to.
I'll, I'll.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Craver?
I just wanted to say thank you. This is well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. Mayor Protem, Dr. McCray?
I'd just like to say that I think from the interviews that she did with us, the staff, the citizens' survey, it looks very much in line with everything that was said and every plan or project that we've talked about for, since I've been on the board for six years. I think it's all included in here and a good plan to help us grow for the future. So I think it's a very condensed version and a great plan for the new board that's going to be coming on and just for the town in general. I think it was well done, so thank you.
And to echo Dr. McCray, I think y'all have a lot of plans in place to provide the services and amenities that the citizens asked for in the survey. I will use the Gulfview project as an example, just because it is mentioned specifically. You have a plan in place for an asset. The next logical thing would be to fund the development of that. Or any other project. That's just a specific one that I know of y'all have on your books.
Okay. Anything else? Dr. McCray? Mayor Protem, you good?
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
All right, Ashley. Some months ago, seems like we've been working at this for quite some time, and we have. It was one of the initiatives of this board when we came in a couple, two years ago, was to put a comprehensive strategic plan in place. Because town doesn't have one. Some of that, what we've reading tonight from these, from these goals mirror exactly what came from this survey that I have in my hand, which is survey of citizens for their valuable input to go into the plan, along with staff, and along with elected officials. And we met a number of times for different feedback sessions to craft a very good strategic plan, which we have. A very good roadmap of what the goals are, what we're doing now, that management in progress, and the opportunities that we need to look at in next steps, which I think is golden. Because it centers the opportunities for what we need to do next, really centers a lot of what the citizens said during the survey. It really mirrors, pretty much so. How can you answer this question? Why Hope Mills?
So it's rude to answer a question with a question. But I'm going to be bold and rude, and after all of the response, survey responses, and in talking to staff and citizens and the board, my question would be, why not Hope Mills? I mean, again, what stands out to me as someone who is from a small town and really understands what it means to be proud of where you're from, that in a place as geographically spread out as Hope Mills is, and kind of tucked in this greater Cumberland County region, that y'all are as large as you are and growing every day, and every single person just about said, what makes Hope Mills, Hope Mills, is the small-town hometown feel. And 18,000 people is not a small town. And the fact that you have people that live here that feel that, that is, to me, just incredible. And if I knew how to bottle that and market that to other places, or help other people achieve that, I would, in a heartbeat, because that's something that is only achieved when staff, citizens, and the board work together, because they love where they live. And you can have a vision and disagree about how you get there.
Right, right.
The best part is just agreeing that you get there, and that you identify what you love and you keep it, and the things that you don't, you can massage into something you do. But that takes teamwork, and I just have been the beneficiary of seeing the product of that teamwork. And for the past few months, I have been privileged to be on the team, but y'all have done the hard work. So I hope that wasn't too rude. My response wasn't too rude.
Nope, nope. Over the past couple of years, we, many of the members of the board, along with town staff, we've attended a lot of ribbon-cutting events in our town. And this was a question that I asked the senior leadership from Wawa. Why Hope Mills? Because you could have put that travel center anywhere, but you chose Hope Mills. I asked the very same question to the owners of Culvers. You could have put Culvers anywhere, but you chose Hope Mills. And the same question goes out to all the residents that are moving into our community every month. Why Hope Mills? It's amazing, you start to, when you ask that question a number of times, it comes back and you see certain answers start to multiply. Character, quality of life, amenities, small town. But we're not a small town. We were. We still are in some ways. But look at all of the road improvement widening projects that are going on in Hope Mills that are currently in place now because of all the traffic. See, on the other side, we can hear, what are some of the challenges? You'll hear growth, you'll hear traffic congestion, and I sit in the same traffic everybody else does. How can we fix traffic congestion? How can we find that balance to keep the small town as we continue to grow?
I will tell you that when you are sitting in traffic, it is hard to keep this perspective. But having traffic congestion is a much better problem than how do we get the cars here? How do we get people to come here? You have people here, you have more people that want to come here, and while it is much easier for me to say from this position, because y'all have a very tough job every day of the week, 24 hours a day, those are good problems to have, and those are opportunities. And, you know, should y'all decide to pursue identifying and solidifying a downtown area, that's a really exciting opportunity for the town and for y'all as commissioners to work on.
It's a, it's a very comprehensive plan, and it's definitely a start for a roadmap of where we need to go. I want to, I want to read the vision one more time, because I think it just, it captures everything that you put into the project. "The mission of the Town of Hope Mills is to provide exceptional public service, public services," which we do. "exceptional, "in a physical, responsible manner to meet and exceed the needs of our residents, visitors, and business community." That answers the why right there. It does. It fully answers the why. "While inspiring community spirit and enhancing the unique quality and character that is Hope Mills." It's well set, it's well packaged. In our second part tonight, Item B, we will see that in a nice series from Viewpoint of how everything that you have put together in this plan comes to light in our, in our Viewpoint segment, which is coming up. So if we don't have any more, any other questions from any of the board members? Chancellor, anybody from the staff have any questions for Ashley?
Thank you, ma'am. No questions, just a comment. What attracts me and excites me more is the timing of it. The strategic plan is outlining what the town is doing for the future growth, or to actually prepare our citizens for the future growth. We're talking about infrastructure, we're talking about expansion of our first responders' emergency services, things of that nature. But this is tied to what we're going to do for our residents in terms of the responsibility we have as a municipality. This is happening at the same time that we're doing our Hope Mills Area Land Use Plan, which is the preparation of how the market is going to actually develop in Hope Mills. So both of these happening at the same time is rare. You usually have one and the other happening at completely odd ends of the spectrum, but for us to be having a very in-depth conversation like this about what we're going to do at the same time as us preparing for a kickoff meeting for our Area Land Use Plan and to, when we can have, that's the timing that I think that is tied to the strategic planning and how this town is being led properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. All right, Ashley, I'm going to sum it up with four legs on my stool. Infrastructure, growth, traffic congestion. Can you guess the fourth one? What we hear so much about from our families and our kids, and it's Parks and Rec opportunities. Those are the four legs on the stool. And I think your plan addresses all four of them. Before you go, just want to make a comment about the Economic Development Strategies 2025, which is a companion document that comes with the strategic plan. And there are four goals that are part of this, that will work in concert with our Hope Mills Land Use Plan as we go forward over the coming years on implementing these plans. And I cannot emphasize enough, thank you, it's been well done, well received.
Thank you.
Item, Item B, I think we have time, we do. As everyone knows, some months ago, we got a phone call from the Dennis Quaid production team. Viewpoint Discover America Series, Hope Mills. "The town collaborated with Viewpoint Project with host Dennis Quaid to showcase our wonderful town across the nation." On the agenda, you will see there are no attachments, because the attachment is a video that will be played on the screen. We need the lights.
In the heart of North Carolina lies Hope Mills, a town that has gracefully embraced growth while preserving its small-town essence. Over the years, Hope Mills has blossomed, offering a unique quality of life filled with recreational opportunities and a tight-knit community feel. This balance is a testament to the town's commitment to maintaining its unique charm amidst progress, a mission in which many small towns aspire to succeed.
Hope Mills is the second-largest municipality in Cumberland County. We're known for our family-friendly environment that increases the quality of life of our residents. We also have that small-town charm mixed with modern amenities. Previously known as a quiet place, we're experiencing very thoughtful and well-managed growth. But with that rapid development, we're also cognizant of ensuring that we preserve the hometown environment that makes our community so special. Within the heart of Hope Mills is our crown jewel, our 90-plus-acre lake with an adjacent historic park. These provide our residents with unique and enjoyable park and recreation activities. With one of the strongest Parks and Recreation Departments in the region, Hope Mills is a perfect place for families, outdoor enthusiasts, and anyone that wants access to nature within a few steps of your front door. We know here in Hope Mills, it's not just a place to live, but Hope Mills is a place to belong.
Two visionary leaders of Hope Mills have paved the way for sensible growth while preserving the town's enchanting charm. Their transparent, collaborative, and educational philosophy fosters a community where residents are well-informed about the town's operations and governance. By mentoring the youth, they instill values of leadership, ensuring the next generation is ready to continue their legacy.
With deep roots in education, myself and Mayor Protem, Dr. McCray, serve in educational leadership positions at Fayetteville Technical Community College. We also have the unique opportunity to serve in government leadership positions, serving in the roles of mayor and mayor pro tem. Every day on campus, we interact and engage with students that live and work right here at Hope Mills, and we also have the opportunity to engage and interact with our local businesses. Educational institutions are nurtured by the communities that surround them, and we're hoping that in times to come, that will inspire people to serve their communities.
Hope Mills thrives on collaboration, and it's a town like Hope Mills where people are deeply connected to one another through schools, churches, small businesses, and local organizations. Collaboration isn't just a nice idea, it's how things get done. Whether through partnerships or shared initiatives, the town's culture of unity brings people together for the greater good.
We cultivate partnerships with local, state, and federal agencies by stimulating sustainable economic activity while massaging local investment. By fostering collaborations and focusing on long-term goals and objectives, we make Hope Mills a better place for businesses to grow and for families to call home.
Through coordination and collaboration, Hope Mills exemplifies how a town can grow sensibly, creating abundant opportunities for its residents.
What really sets Hope Mills apart is our commitment to preparing people not just for today's jobs, but for tomorrow's opportunities. We're offering advanced technology and AI courses that equip our residents with the skills they need to thrive in a changing workforce. It's about building a strong pipeline from education to employment right here in our own community. That kind of intentional investment in people makes Hope Mills a place where innovation, growth, and opportunity go hand in hand.
A town's unique character is what sets it apart from others, and it could be its history, its cultural identity, or any defining feature that makes it special. It's about residents actively participating in community initiatives, supporting local businesses, fostering a culture of mutual respect and understanding. A collaborative spirit and a unique character work together to build a strong, vibrant community such as Hope Mills. This includes initiatives that promote civil engagement, celebrate local culture, and address the needs of the community. Educators and local business leaders work hand in hand to ensure Hope Mills maintains its delicate balance of growth and charm, and this effort ensures that the town's unique character is preserved even as it evolves every day.
Artist Village is a relatively new 501(c)(3) charitable nonprofit. Our mission here in Hope Mills is to develop an arts-performing group that is diverse and includes all of the residents of Hope Mills and the surrounding areas. We have artisan fairs, so our local artists can display and sell their handmade goods. We have a community theater that does several concerts a year and performs for various community events. Our productions run anywhere from murder mystery dinner theaters to stage productions. All of our casts come from residents in and around Hope Mills, whatever their talent may be, if they can operate a saw, a hammer, to come and help us build sets, build our stage, costumes, props, and just come and become part of our village.
Hope Mills, North Carolina is more than just a place. It's a community where dreams are nurtured, families thrive, and the future shines bright. With a vision for continued growth and harmony, Hope Mills remains an incredible place to live, work, and raise a family.
Our vision for Hope Mills is a vibrant, diverse, and welcoming community that fosters its distinct character. Thriving economy, high quality of life. Hope Mills is a great place to live because we care about people. We invest in our community, and we celebrate our cultural heritage. Our town is for everyone. Our distinct character, thriving economy, and high-quality life are evident in all that we do. We pride ourselves on building and growing partnerships with regional and state governments to achieve our vision. Local businesses and nonprofits are the backbone of our economy and our community. If you live, work, or play here and you want to be involved, you have a voice. When you live in Hope Mills, you belong and are valued. Hope Mills is more than just a dot on the map, it's a community with heart and soul. It is a destination.
To learn more about life in Hope Mills, North Carolina, call or click today.
So what do you think?
I like the Easter Bunny in it. Who put that in there?
It was dead whale.
Oh, it was done well.
One-sided?
Didn't show the old name, but Trade Street there, everybody thought too much about it.
Yeah, it was.
Just a little bit.
But it was on there. Any comments from the board before we adjourn the special meeting, and then we'll get ready for the seven o'clock meeting? Okay. All right. Motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none opposed, Mayor Protem votes in affirmative, we are adjourned until seven.
That was his, his, his microphone.